Good evening and welcome to tonight's meeting of the Shawnee City Council. I would ask that you please silence your electronic devices at this time. I am Mayor Michelle Distler. I will be chairing this meeting. I will do a roll call at this time. Councilmember Zimmerman?
Present.
Councilmember Neighbors?
Present.
Councilmember Jenkins?
Present.
Councilmember Kimling?
Present.
Councilmember Meyer?
Present.
Councilmember Adrian?
Present.
Councilmember Sandifer?
Present.
Councilmember Constance?
Present.
Thank you. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next, I will explain our procedures for public input. During the meeting, I will offer the opportunity for public input. If you'd like to speak to the council at any of those times, please come forward to the microphone. I will ask you to state your name and address for the record, and you may offer your comments. So that members of the audience can hear your comments, I would ask that you speak directly into the microphone. By policy, comments are limited to five minutes, and no person may speak more than twice to any one agenda item. After you're finished, please sign the form on the podium to ensure we have an accurate record of your name and address. In addition, while we won't do a roll call vote on every vote, I will state councilmembers' names who vote in minority so that our listening audience will have a clear and accurate record of the vote. The next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. Does anyone have an item they would like to remove from the Consent Agenda? Seeing none, I'll accept a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
Move for approval.
Second.
This motion has been made, seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The next item on the agenda is Mayor's Items, and tonight I have a special recognition for another Shawnee hero. I'd like to ask Mr. Joshua Owen to join me in the front of the dais. So tonight, we recognize the heroic efforts of Joshua Owen. On September 11th, 2016, Josh was in Shawnee store parking lot when he heard screams for help. He responded and helped rescue a woman and her eight-month-old son who were under attack by two assailants. In his efforts to protect the victims, Josh suffered multiple gunshot wounds. Thanks to Josh's heroic intervention, the woman and her child escaped further harm. The Carnegie Medal is given throughout North America to those who risk their lives to an extraordinary degree while saving or attempting to save the lives of others. The Carnegie Hero Fund Commission was established by industrialist Andrew Carnegie in 1904 with the sole purpose of recognizing outstanding citizen heroes like Josh. Tonight, I am honored to present this medal to Joshua Owen on behalf of the Carnegie Hero Fund Commission. Congratulations, Joshua, and thank you for helping us to make this a safer community.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much, because if it hadn't been for you, the outcome that day could have been very different. So, thank you. I just never thank you enough.
And I just wanted to say, I just want to thank, you know, thank you to the support of the community, the hospital, fire department, police department, ambulance, MEDAC, and everybody who put forth a lot of effort to help me out and to help out the community.
Thank you so much. One other Mayor's Item I would like to mention is the City Hall Crusaders is working to raise money for Special Olympics, and last I checked, I think we were about at $100. So to try to get that up, you know, maybe I would, should propose something like if we can get $3,000 by the time of the event, I would chair a council meeting in a Chewbacca outfit or something. Would that encourage? Is that worth the, worth the price of admission to try to get us to get some of these funds up? So, just a reminder that we are trying to raise money for Special Olympics, and it is a great cause, so. Another item under Mayor's Items is to consider the request for qualifications for an executive search firm. On December 11th, 2018, the governing body directed staff to issue a request for proposal for an executive search services for a city manager. The city received 11 responses to the RFP. The recommended action is to consider authorizing the mayor to negotiate an agreement with a selected firm for executive search services for the city manager. Included in the packet were the top three scored firms by the six councilmembers and myself that scored the RFPs that were returned. So I was going to leave this open for discussion. If you guys want to discuss and then choose one of the top three, or, you know, one of the other 11, but the focus was on the top three. So does the council have any questions or any comments they want to make to start? Mr. Sandifer?
Well, I'd say, you know, with all of us that have been involved with this, we have a top choice already. I don't know why we would want to change it. You know, we went through this process to pick out the top choice, and we have it.
Well, that's fine. Yeah, I just wanted, I, to have the discussion of the top three, just in case.
Right.
Yeah, yes, we have one that definitely scored the highest. Mr. Neighbors?
Yes, the mayor asked me to contact the references for all of the top three. So there are 15 people I contacted and told, talked to by phone. The information is in the packet, and then I got, talked to four more Friday afternoon, and then this morning. So, and I, I would agree with Councilman Sandifer. I like, like the, the, lots of interesting information out there. I think that any of the three that we choose would be very capable, but I do believe that the Springstead people were at the top. Certainly, that was my impression, of course, you know, and I will entertain questions from anybody that wants to, because I got to talk to the references, but everyone was highly complimentary, and I'm sure we're going to have a very positive process as we go forward.
If there isn't any council discussion or questions or anything, we can go ahead and make a motion for...
I'll make a motion for Springstead and Waters.
Second.
Okay, a motion has been made and seconded for Springstead. Is there anyone from the...
Or, pretty Springstead, I'm sorry.
Is there anyone from the audience that would like to speak to this item? Seeing none, I will, motion's been made, seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item is E., Appointments. Item number one is to consider an appointment to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Policy Statement PS-72, Boards and Commissions: Recruitment and Appointment Process. Updated the methods used to recruit volunteers to serve on boards, commissions, streamline the process for approving the appointments. The Board of Zoning Appeals has a vacancy left by Matt Zimmerman's election to the city council. I am recommending the appointment of James Kilmartin to the Board of Zoning Appeals to fill the unexpired term ending June 30th, 2019. Does anyone on the council have any questions? Anyone from the audience like to speak to this item? I'll accept a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made, seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item is Business from the Floor. Is there anyone who has comments on an issue that is not on tonight's agenda? The next item on the agenda is Public Items. Item number one is to consider a cereal malt beverage license for Ethio Mart located at 10919 Shawnee Mission Parkway, Unit B. The owner of Ethio Mart has submitted a CMB license application for on-premises consumption through December 31st, 2018. The recommended action is to approve the license. Is there any discussion from the council? Anyone from the audience like to speak to this item? Seeing none, I'll accept a motion.
Move to approve.
A motion has been made, seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item number two is to consider a Massage Establishment License for Innovative Massage and Bodywork located at 11810 West 62nd Place. The owner of Innovative Massage and Bodywork has submitted a Massage Establishment Application through December 31st, 2018. The recommended action is to approve the license. Is there any discussion from the council? Anyone from the audience like to speak to this item? I'll accept a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion has been made, seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item number three is to consider adopting Resolution Number 1828, Resolution Number 1829, and passing Ordinance Number 3212, accepting the best bids and authorizing the sale and delivery of general obligation bonds, Series 2018A. On January 8th, 2018, the governing body authorized the sale of general obligation bonds for Monday, February 12th, 2018. One series of bonds will be offered, and bids are scheduled to be opened at 10:00 a.m. Dave McGilver, Gil... How do you say it? Dave from Springstead will make a brief presentation.
Good evening. My name's Dave McGilver with Springstead. Guess I feel I should make a separation. I'm representing Springstead Advisors. Springstead Waters is a different company within the Springstead Group, but, you know, we're related, but we have distinct, because of regulatory reasons, that we keep these separate. So, good evening, I'm Dave McGilver, Chairman of Springstead. You have a number of actions before you, the legal documents. If you have any questions on those, Joe Serrano of Q-Tech Rock, your bond counsel's here, and get into the fine points of those. I'm going to cover the business items. We did take competitive bids this morning via the Internet. The city received eight bids. The lowest or best bid was from Citigroup at a rate of 2.37%. When we started this back in December, we had done an estimate of about 2.45%, so we were under the estimate. I would just say about the market, that, the municipal bond market's been like all the financial markets, all over the place. But selling in this January, February point is really a, usually a very opportune time, because there's very little municipal bond supply, and in Kansas, there's been virtually none. So, on, what is a $10 million transaction, you've got eight bids, so it's a large number of bids, and it really helped you get to the low interest rate. I would note that because of the nature of the bids, technical piece, there have been with a premium, and we use that to reduce them. People actually give you money, more money than you ask for, but you're paying a slightly higher rate, so how we get back to the same places? We take that and reduce the amount of the, of the debt. So we start off with $9,848,000. We were able to use a premium to reduce the amount of the debt to, uh, $8,848,000. So we reduced it by $1 million, and you get to the same amount of annual debt service. So, in all the resolutions and ordinances, it's $8,848,000. Just one, one item. The city's credit rating was reviewed by Moody's Investor Service. I usually like to give the highlights of that. You and, and the folks in the audience and at home, you know, the highest possible rating for general obligation is a AAA rating. You're just one notch below that, a AA1. So you're really at the top of the game, there's just one more to go, so. And ratings are, you know, comparative, so they compare you with other AAA and AA1, so it's very high rated. You've got AA, single A, E double A, so you're really near the top. So you have a B double A1. Moody's report mentions credit strengths, large tax base, fairably located near Kansas City, favorable resident wealth levels, stable financial operations with healthy financial reserves. They have a piece that says, factors that could lead to an upgrading, more growth in the city's tax base, and the sustained trend that you have in generating, you know, slight surpluses every year in the budget process. That you have a general fund balance level that's up there where other Triple As and Double A1s, that's an item you can control, and you've done a very good job of keeping things right at that balanced budget. So, it's well looked at, it's really a big driver in the credit rating. So with that, we'd recommend, oh, I mentioned everything but the folks that bought the bonds, Citigroup. So we'd recommend award to Citigroup at a rate of 2.37, and be glad to take any questions.
Any questions or comments from the council? Okay, we...
Just a comment.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Jenkins?
Thanks for the information. That's like a really good rate, I think we did well, so.
Thank you.
I'd like to move ahead with this.
Okay. There are three actions that are required. The first is to consider adopting Resolution Number 1828, accepting the best bid for internal improvement bonds, Series 2018A. I'll accept a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion has been made, seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. The second action is to consider passing Ordinance Number 3212, authorizing the issuance and delivery of internal improvement bonds, Series 2018A. Is there any discussion from the council? Anyone from the audience like to speak to this item? I'll accept a motion.
For approval.
Second.
Motion has been made, seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Final action is to consider adopting Resolution Number 1829, prescribing the form and details for internal improvement bonds, Series 2018A. Is there any discussion from the council? Anyone from the audience want to speak to this item? I'll accept a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion has been made, seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item number four is to consider adopting Resolution Number 1830, approving and authorizing the execution and delivery of a municipal lease agreement with Country Club Bank for financing a Pierce Velocity aerial fire truck for a seven-year lease term. On January 22nd, 2018, the governing body approved the purchase of a 2018 Pierce Velocity aerial fire truck and additional loose equipment in the amount of $1,179,574.50. The city received four bids. Staff recommends award to Country Club Bank a 2.98% true interest cost. Resolution is required. Recommended action is consider adopting Resolution Number 1830, approving and authorizing the execution and delivery of a municipal lease agreement with Country Club Bank for financing the purchase of a Pierce Velocity aerial fire truck, approved on January 22nd, 2018. Is there any discussion from the council? Mr. Jenkins?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to take a look at possibly paying this off as soon as possible, so is there any limitations to paying it early, paying off the lease early and purchasing the fire
Maureen Rogers, Finance Director. It has a call at four years that could be exercised.
So I'm looking at that, that county courthouse tax of the county, for the county that we're receiving, and this is something to me that is tailor-made for that, those funds, for public, public safety, so that's why I'm kind of looking in that direction. Because I think we have, we have the funds now, because I think we only obligated 200-something thousand in the last meeting, and this would be probably still enough in that 1.5 million to actually pay for this, cash and carry.
We can definitely have that as an option in the budget process, when, because it'll be a few more years before we can exercise it, but we can definitely have that as one of the options.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion from the council? Anyone from the audience like to speak to this item? I'll accept a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made, seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item number five is to consider adopting Resolution Number 1831, consenting to extended completion date and second supplemental trust indenture related to the Prairie Pines Project. In 2014, the city issued 20 million of federally taxable private activity revenue bonds pursuant to trust indenture that required the project to be completed by December 31st, 2017. In July of 2017, the governing body extended the deadline for completion. A resolution is required to consent to the extension for the completion date for the purpose of those bonds. The city's bond attorney, Joe Serrano, is present if there are any questions. The recommended action is to consider adopting Resolution Number 1831, extending the completion date until December 31st, 2018, and authorizing the mayor to execute and deliver the second supplemental indenture and such other documents, certificates, and instruments as may be necessary or desirable to carry out and comply with the intent of the resolution. Is there any discussion from the council? Anyone from the audience want to comment? I will accept a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion has been made, seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item number six is to consider adopting Resolution Number 1832, expressing the city's intent to issue federally taxable private activity revenue bonds in aggregate principal amount not to exceed 48 million for the Westbrook Green Project. MP Westbrook North LLC intends to construct a mixed-use facility at the northeast corner of 75th Street and Quavira Road to be known as Westbrook Green. Resolution is declaring the intent of the city to issue private activity revenue bonds to allow the developer to purchase construction materials on a sales tax-exempt basis as provided in the redevelopment agreement. The recommended action is to consider adopting Resolution Number 1832, declaring the intent of the city to issue federally taxable private activity revenue bonds in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed 48 million for the purpose of financing a portion of the cost of acquiring, constructing, improving, and equipping a commercial development. Is there any discussion from the council? Anyone from the audience like to speak to this item? Seeing none, I'll accept a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made, seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item number seven is to consider contract number 2018-0022, an excise tax abatement agreement with McGregor Interests Tomahawk LLC for Tomahawk Hills Fourth Platte. Pursuant to policy, McGregor Interests Tomahawk LLC is formally requested to be considered for the conditional abatement for the excise tax on .54 acres of land generally located in the 11,000 block of West 75th Street for the purpose of developing a one-lot commercial subdivision. Recommended action is to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the contract number 2018-0022. Is there any discussion from the council? Anyone from the audience like to speak to this item? I'll accept a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made, seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is items from the Planning Commission meeting of January 17th, 2018. Item number one is to consider SUP-011801, a special use permit for scooters' drive-through to operate a drive-through service at 11002 West 75th Street. Planning Commission voted 9-0 to recommend that the governing body approve the special use permit, subject to the conditions listed in the staff report. Does anyone on the council have any questions? Anyone from the audience like to speak to this item? I will accept a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made, seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item number two is to consider SUP-021801, a special use permit for Suede Enterprises LLC for an auto dealer license for a zero-inventory dealership located at 7023 Martindale Road. Planning Commission voted 9-0 to recommend governing body approve the special use permit, subject to the conditions listed in the staff report. Does anyone on the council have any questions? Anyone from the audience like to speak to this item? Seeing none, I'll accept a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made, seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is Staff Items. Item number one is to consider an award contract number 2018-0023 for the 2018 Mill and Overlay Curb Sidewalk and Inlet Repair Program. Bids are received from five contractors on February 2nd, 2018. Staff recommends awarding the bid to Phoenix Concrete and Underground LLC for $5,404,000. Recommended action is consider approving and authorizing the mayor to sign the contract number 2018-0023. Does anyone on the council have any questions? Anyone from the audience like to speak to this item? I'll accept a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made, seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item number two is to consider contract number 2018-0024, an agreement with BNSF Railway Corporation for the permanent closure of the 55th Street Crossing. Staff has worked over the last 10 years to implement a railroad quiet zone along the BNSF Emporia subdivision line. The closure of the 55th Street Crossing is the last remaining action that needs to occur in order for the quiet zone to be complete from 55th Street south to 75th Street. Implementation of this quiet zone improves the quality of life for thousands of residents in western Shawnee. Recommended action is to consider approving and authorizing the mayor to sign contract number 2018-0024. Does anyone on the council have any questions? Anyone from the audience like to speak to this item? I'll accept a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion has been made, seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item number three is to consider contract number 2018-0025 and contract number 2018-0026 for the 2018 Video Inspection Services with HydroClean and A1 Sewer and Septic. City received proposals from five video service providers. Staff proposes awarding contracts to HydroClean LLC in an amount of $60,018, and A1 Sewer and Septic, Inc. in the amount of $69,074. There are two recommended actions. First is to consider approving and authorizing the mayor to sign contract number 2018-0025. Does anyone on the council have any questions? Anyone from the audience like to speak to this item? I'll accept a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion has been made, seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Second recommended action is consider approving and authorizing the mayor to sign contract number 2018-0026. Does anyone on the council have any questions? Anyone from the audience like to speak to this item? I'll accept a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made, seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item number four is to consider approval of blanket purchase orders for diesel fuel and magnesium chloride. Each budget year, the Public Works Department requests blanket purchase orders for the purchase of bulk diesel fuel and magnesium chloride. They're requesting $180,000 for bulk diesel fuel and $60,000 for magnesium chloride. The two POs are required. When the city needs to replenish diesel fuel, staff contacts multiple vendors to determine the best pricing, but potentially these purchases could exceed $50,000 with one vendor. A purchasing cooperative is used for magnesium chloride. There are two recommended actions. First is to consider approving and authorizing the interim city manager to sign a blanket PO for bulk diesel fuel in the amount of $180,000. Does anyone on the council have any questions? Anyone from the audience like to speak to this item? I'll accept a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made, seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Second recommended action is to consider approving and authorizing the interim city manager to sign a blanket PO for magnesium chloride in the amount of $60,000. Does anyone on the council have any questions? Anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? I'll accept a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion has been made, seconded for this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item number five is to consider Ordinance Number 3213, amending Title 17 of the Shawnee Municipal Code. Title 17 of the Shawnee Municipal Code incorporates by reference the provisions of the zoning rules and regulations for the city. Staff is proposing codifying this into the SMC to make it easier for the public to find zoning regulations and in anticipation of implementing new SMC software. Recommended action is to consider passing Ordinance Number 3213. Does anyone on the council have any questions? Anyone from the audience like to speak to this item? I'll accept a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made, seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item number six is to consider 2018 federal legislative program. A draft of the 2018 federal legislative program is included. Staff will be available for questions about the proposed program. Recommended action is to consider approving the 2018 federal legislative program with any recommended changes. Does anyone on the council have any questions? Anyone from the audience like to speak to this item? I'll accept a motion. Move for approval.
Second.
Motion has been made, seconded on this item. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is miscellaneous items. Item number one is to ratify the semi-monthly claim for February 12th, 2018, in the amount of $4,459,63.24. Does anyone on the council have any questions? Anyone from the audience like to speak to this item? Seeing none, I'll accept a motion.
So moved.
Second. Motion has been made, seconded on this item. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item number two is miscellaneous council items. Does anyone on the council have an item they would like to discuss? Mr. Neighbor?
Don't forget Wednesday is Valentine's Day.
Any other items? Mr. Jenkins?
Just an item of, to, for information, basically, for everybody. I attended a meeting the other day here at City Hall with the Police Department and members of the staff, city staff, talking about the issues concerning children being picked up at school. And it really is kind of a problem in areas of, particularly in the elementary school areas, where so many, there's so many parents picking up kids, and there's not adequate, really, places for the cars to wait for the kids or to pick up the kids. And getting a lot of pushback from the residents, and it's, it's a real concern. And one of the things that we decided in that meeting was that, you know, perhaps the school district itself ought to be more involved in this process. They kind of just throw the monkey on our back and say, yeah, that's your problem, Shawnee. But it really should be part of their problem, too. You look at Ryan Benninghoven, which was the subject of this particular case, and they've got a large area there, since they did the new construction, where they could pave it or gravel it or do something, where you could, people could stage there and then, and pull in. I don't know, there's a lot of things that could be done. Chief Moser set up a meeting, or we got a meeting set up for the, what is it, the 15th? Afternoon, 15th, to meet with a representative from the school board. So, I really appreciate the staff taking action on that, moving it forward. I plan to go to that as well, and, and, because I think it's going to take a little bit of